And I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council to order. If you can, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, I can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Amy, please call the rule.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Chuha?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Loco?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes for the regular session on August 11th? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for August 11th?
No.
Motion approved and seconded. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Abstain.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, we have a resolution of appreciation for Hannah Sekus, and I would like that read in its entirety, please.
A resolution of appreciation. Whereas Ms. Hannah Sekus has served as a member of the City of Chardon Planning Commission for the last four years, and whereas during that time Ms. Sekus served the City of Chardon with honor and integrity, and whereas Ms. Sekus's unselfish contributions have benefited the City of Chardon and its residents, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Chardon, State of Ohio, that section one, the Council of the City of Chardon personally and collectively, and on behalf of the government and its residents, expresses its deep appreciation and thanks to Ms. Sekus for her faithful service to the city. Section two, the mayor of the City of Chardon shall present the original of this resolution to Ms. Hannah Sekus.
Thank you. Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
No moved.
Second. Discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes. Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of appreciation. Resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of appreciation.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two?
No moved.
Backed. Been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I'll just say that I'm grateful for Hannah's service on the planning commission. I've been the chairman of the planning commission for an entire term, that she's been helping us with her expertise as a lawyer and as a city resident, and she will be missed, and we wish her best of luck in her future endeavor.
I served with Hannah for a number of years, valuable asset on the planning commission, and she always had great insight in the items being presented, and she'll be missed in Any other comments for Hannah? Okay. Call the question, please.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Thank you. And Hannah, if you are watching now or sometime in the future, here is your resolution of appreciation, signed by everyone, and I imagine we'll get that to her in one way or another.
I will make sure.
But once again, thank you for your service to the city, and we appreciate it. Thanks, Amy. Agenda item number six, manager's report. Randy?
Thank you. Good evening. The first point was the refrigerator at the Heritage House decided to break, so it's been out of commission for a few weeks now. I know one is going to be ordered soon to its replacement, and Chardon Square Association generously said that they would donate $2,000 towards the purchase of that new refrigerator because of the amount of use that it gets and the amount of use that they used it as well. So we're thankful for that, appreciate that from Chardon Square Association. We had a resignation. Ryan Adamidas, his position from maintenance worker in the street division, his last day will be September the 16th. Ryan worked with the city almost exactly two years, started on nine fourteen of 2020. Update on the part-time patrol and vote to unionize. SERB did not side with the city on the city's objection to allow them to unionize, so at this point, they can take it to a vote, and if the vote is in favor of unionizing, then we'll have to get together and have negotiations. So we'll continue down that path. The fall newsletter is in production and should be delivered to our residents around mid-September. It'll be there in time for them to have the information about the trash collection, which is one of the main times that we try to get it out by. Just a point that was not in the packet. The city, again, is doing a Chardon employee fitness challenge. We did this last year with our employees. Everyone's allowed to sign up, and it runs from late September through November, and you can log in. It's all in the app. You log in the amount of time and the different kinds of activities you do, and then you can win prizes and challenges, prizes through the challenges, and you can see your competitors as you go. It's kind of a fun way to get people out and about and active. So we'll be doing that again this year. Another note, and you might have picked up on this as well when you reviewed the financial statements, the revenue report under the general fund, you can see the municipal income tax. We had budgeted $6,494,000 for this year, and through August, that's 66.67% of the year, our collection has been 74.83% of the municipal income tax, so that's 8.16% higher, which is a good thing. And on the other side, the general fund expenses are 4.83% lower than were budgeted, but this is a typical scenario that we always talk about when we go through our budget cycles, that we overestimate our expenditures, underestimate our revenues, so that at the end of the year, everything should be okay. Unfortunately, it's trending that way right now for 2022.
Randy, excuse me, there was a piece in the paper last week about how listing communities that had, were seeing increases in income tax revenue, and I believe Chardon was one of those that saw an increase. I don't remember the exact number.
Oh, yeah. I didn't see it.
Okay. It was in the Plain Dealer last week.
As a positive thing, I hope?
Yes, as a positive thing. There were some other communities, you know, the ones that are dependent on large companies like Progressive that saw a hit for obvious reasons. Before you go on, just to, while I got your attention, quick question on Ryan, the maintenance worker, and maybe Paul can address this. Did he have like, did he have an exit, or did he, he had not yet gone, but will he have an exit interview? Do we know why he's leaving?
The exit interviews are hell with me.
With you?
But yes, he will next week, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but my understanding is he's taking a position with the City of Manor in their park and rec.
My concern is that, and, you know, are we being competitive with our salaries? We have, there is a lot of competition for quality workers, especially people in construction and related industries, and I'm just wondering if we're being competitive enough to maintain, you know, quality personnel here.
It's a very good question. I know when we did the CBAs, which is over two years ago now, we look, obviously, and compare them to everyone. When we do that process, again, we may recommend to council that instead of being more towards the center, which is where we usually try to be, we need to be a little more aggressive and bump them up so that they're a little higher than the average.
Question, probably to the finance director. Are we very concerned with those ongoing lawsuits, and I don't know where they stand right today, regarding working from home, working in a city, and how that's playing out? Wasn't there some talk that they could go retro and?
I have heard that, but at this point in time, I don't know the exact numbers or how it'll impact the city.
If I may, Councilmember Loco, there's a number of lawsuits that are addressing that specific issue. It remains open in the courts as to how, so you have trial courts who, some trial courts have issued decisions, and some intermediate courts are reviewing the matter on appeal. Ultimately, it's going to be an issue for the Supreme Court of Ohio to decide. It has not been decided by the Supreme Court of Ohio yet, though. Thanks. I understand, too, that there is some legislative discussion about a potential settlement, but my knowledge is limited to that.
We don't, you don't know off the top of your head, number of people working in the city, live here versus working outside the city who live here, and how many are working at home, and we're not, we don't have that kind of stuff.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have that.
I didn't think we did.
We may have something from Rita from more than six months ago, when they were talking about it, and if I remember right, Matt had said that it was not going to be, it was not, it was going to be inconsequential, whichever way it went. We can see if we can find out more information. Okay. Another point is staff continues to work diligently on the 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Plan. Our goal is to have it to council by the end of September. Mark and I will be working together to try to pull that all together. As you know, it's a very detailed document, and there's kind of the basis of setting up the budget for the following year. There's so many pieces, parts, and intricacies of this that we need to work and make sure we can get it all together, so we have it to present for council for approval in October. Moving on to the projects, the Chardon Living Memorial Park Phase Two, construction is basically complete at this point in time. I don't know if anybody's been down. The pad is there, ready for the restroom to come in, and the trail's been worked on. It's, uh, looks quite different than it did. The Center Street Sidewalk Info Project, the project, FID date still has not been determined, so we're waiting on that with ODOT and working with ODOT to get that to go forward. The Hidden Glen Water Main Loop project, we're going to push it back until 2023 due to the fact that the estimated construction cost has increased by $163,900, which is about 23% of the project, and staff will continue to try to get together with the parties, with Hidden Glen Associates, to talk about potential cost sharing in the future. And that kind of leads me to the comment about the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. All of our projects that we had planned in our last CIP are now much more expensive, and that's the challenge this year, is really spreading them out over this next five-year period. Probably not going to be adding much. We have to add some new things. We might have to push some of the things that were on last year's out to other years. So it's that balancing act that we're going through right now with the five-year plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there an update on the sidewalk repair?
The, the maintenance, sidewalk maintenance?
Yeah, sidewalk maintenance.
Just that they're out there working, they seem to be doing well.
Yeah, they're up around the square currently, and so they should be ramping up here in the next week and a half.
Yeah, just a concern is when they open them up, and then the ones they start with, the restoration takes a while, and I'm just concerned if someone rolls an ankle or something having voids alongside the sidewalk, that's, I've had some folks.
We can make, we can make mention.
Being in the neighborhood, I get a lot of comments, as you probably well know, Paul.
We can make mention. Certain contractors do the restoration as they leave, others do not.
Yeah, I figured that's probably what they're looking at doing, is just kind of economizing and doing it all at once. It's just, it's a long time to, whoever started, you know, yours might be open for three weeks or four weeks.
We'll make, we'll make, make them aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow that up. I think it's critical that that gets done before Halloween.
Yeah, I think the project's supposed to wrap up, I hope.
Before Halloween, but the other.
Yeah, their schedule hasn't finishing well before Halloween. Yeah. Good point, Dave.
Any other questions for Randy? All right, thank you, Randy. Agenda item number seven, our planning commission report. Andy?
Thank you. Planning Commission met in regular session on August 16th. We had two items on the agenda. The first has to do with a, in addition to the existing industrial building, this is the red metal frame building you see immediately north of the state highway patrol office. This is at 510 Center Street. They're putting a major addition on the back of this, and I'll let Steve explain a little bit more about that in a minute. The other item we have is quite interesting as well. The Hilltopper Car Wash, which is also on Center Street, adjacent to the, to the, to the bike path, is going to be undergoing a major, some major work. In fact, if you can see it right now, it's closed off, and they're, and they're starting to do some, some work down there. But they're going to be rehabilitating that building and putting in new, new equipment and putting new, new exterior cladding on the building. So it's quite, I think, an exciting development. This is, property was acquired recently, is that true, Steve?
Yeah.
By a larger company. I'll let you go ahead, take it from here, then.
Yeah, so we're, they're working with them. Their architect is working through the final design elements. Planning Commission gave approval of a, of a concept to what the outside was going to look like, with the final design details will be approved by Dominic Durante, the city architect, and their, and their architects going back and forth, finalizing those. I'm hoping early next week they'll have that. Some of the details are dependent on which company they end up getting to be able to supply the actual siding for the building, but they're, but they're going to, that's, they're going to remove all the dated signage. It's going to have, it's going to have a white vertical seam siding and a, and a black metal roof, so it's going to look completely different than the cinder block that's out there. It's going to be much brighter and a lot cleaner, crisper look. They're also redoing, they already did, before they bought it, the previous owner had redone some of the concrete that was really bad. They are redoing all of the concrete that's bad in the, in front of the building, so. And there'll be new signage installed and new order kiosks. It's essentially going to be almost a brand-new car wash when it's all said and done, to compete with all the other car washes in town. And then the other project that Councilman Blackley had mentioned is over at We Call on Center Street. It's the old Eagle America property. They're going to add a 12,000-square-foot addition onto the back of the building for, for that building, for that business. They're expanding. They moved here from Orwell right before COVID hit, and they, they've been talking about expanding, they were talking about expanding as soon as they bought the building. They're just now getting to the point, they've already done some of the, the grading and the parking lot work is already finished, so this part of the Phase Two of that is just the addition. So it's a 12,000-square-foot addition to the building.
And they do have a unique product line with, in the, in bridge building.
Bridge bolts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's interesting that Chardon has attracted, there's a number of sort of niche, high-quality machinists and, and industrial suppliers that are located here in Chardon. We should be quite happy about that.
Question to Steve. I've noticed work's finally started on the gas station down on Water Street. Is that?
That's not part of any approved plan to do anything there. It's, it's basically, one of the first steps that they have to do was, when they came to planning commission a couple of years, I think it's been two years ago now, they basically, if they wanted to do something there, the planning commission was, any sort of use experience, it was going to require them to abandon the gas station. So all they've done so far is removed the pumps and the canopy, and I believe when they removed the canopy, they might have dropped it on the roof, and that's why there was a hole in the roof for a couple of weeks. And it was there for a couple of weeks because they couldn't get a contractor out there to fix it, but it is patched, and they did a really good job. So right now, that property probably looks as good as it has, and, well, since I've been here at least 10 or 12 years.
The next step would be the tank removal.
Yes, that's the next step, and I haven't heard anything on when or if or when that's going to take place.
Would they require to do the tank removal? Would they need to have an approved site plan, or is that just?
That's just removing the tanks and going through, yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought planning commission, I thought you guys approved.
We approved a concept, or actually, no, it was just an informal.
It was an informal meeting, yeah.
So we, everybody said, yeah, we like what you want to do, but we have some concerns about how we eventually want it to look. I mean, still an outstanding concern that I have is how they're going to do lighting for this, they're proposing to put a, a used car lot there and do a lot of improvements. As Steve says, it's been an eyesore for a long time, and, and they're going to greatly improve that, but as long as it doesn't, you know, we don't get light pollution impinging on the, on the adjacent residential neighborhood and so on, and those are some of the things that, that planning commission will look at very closely when it, when it does come before us.
Yeah, they're, when they, the plan that they've started to put forward that I think they're going to want to, I mean, but even this, it's been a year since I've talked to any of their design people, that they've pretty much got a fairly finalized plan, is they would be ripping out, like, they would, those, the curb-to-curb, the aprons that go the full width are going to be gone. There would be single entry points into the parking lots. They'd be cutting back asphalt from the sidewalk back, so there'd be grass in the, in the tree lawn and between the sidewalk and the parking lot, so, and they'd be planting trees, and there'd be, it would look, even if it would be a used car lot, it would look significantly different than how it sits right now. Lots of landscaping, and everything would be cleaned up. Building would be, the exterior of the building would be painted and cleaned.
Steve, I've had a few residents ask me about the renovations going on at the property east of Washington. I call it the old Rhymes Trucking Property. What is?
They, they, we stopped them. They needed to get their architect involved because they never came to planning commission, never, they just started working, and when they really started ripping the front of the building off, I was on vacation. So they're, they've since stopped, and they're working with the same architect that, that's working with Hilltopper and did Chardon Tavern to get their paperwork into planning commission probably in October. But there's no plans for the building. They're just a new owner. In the building, the, the doors were starting to fall off the building, the siding was starting to rust, and he, for what he was trying to do was to try to make the building weather tight and, and make improvements, but he forgot to call first and started doing a lot of work without.
Call first, everyone.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, that concludes our part of the report.
Thank you, Andy. Steve?
Moving on to agenda item number eight, council committee reports, park and rec.
Debbie and Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Martin and I met with the park and rec board on September 1st, and rec director Adam Rogers reported that the pool is closed for the year, and it will go through the winterization process around mid-September. The fall-winter brochure was posted to the website and sent to Chardon Schools. Flyers were placed in all of the trail kiosks. We were able to bring back adult volleyball and partner on a few new soccer programs for this fall. We received a grant from Doggo Parks Foundation, the amount of $2,500, to help rehab some areas of the walking trail at Living Memorial. We discussed pros and cons of the bands that were in the summer series, and Mr. Rogers is considering horseback riding lessons or adding chess lessons. Couldn't read my writing. And we're, we won't have a meeting the rest of the year unless Mr. Rogers feels it's necessary, but he will send us his monthly or bi-monthly reports, and we can share those with council. Anything else, Kyle?
No, just the, I did see that the fall brochure was posted through the city's Facebook page, so it's getting out there, so take a look. Some good programs.
Thank you. Randy, are you going to report on the?
Have you mentioned?
Joint Recreation, okay, because Adam didn't bring that up.
You said you put together a pros and cons of the summer concert series?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, it's the grunge one, right?
Yes.
My list of pros is really high. What's, what are the cons on?
I won't discuss that in an open meeting.
All right. Fair enough.
You know, it's humorous. Way back in the day, I received complaints because we were having bands that played 60s and 70s music, and we were told that that's not appropriate for Friday night concerts because it's not reaching the crowds. Now, if you go, the 60s and the 70s music is the most popular, so I think some of us have aged. I don't know who I'm talking about, but I'm just, so.
That could have been it.
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's kind of interesting to see how things shift over time.
Move on to some grunge bands.
I heard a lot of positives about the grunge band, and then, you know, so I think one of this, we're trying to appeal to a broad base of people, not just the same folks week after week, so.
That's right.
You know.
So I said pros and cons.
Right. We also lucked out with great weather. I think only one time did it rain, and of course, it was Chardon Polka Band, but otherwise, it was great weather for all the concerts, so that definitely was a pro.
They even played for about a half an hour, so.
They tried. I saw them. I stood there, I watched them, but yeah.
Give it a good try.
They did. I have to give them credit for their effort.
But it's great energy, draws a good crowd for Friday nights, and now we have football.
Very good. Anything else for either Kyle or Debbie?
Nothing.
Thank you for your update.
Thanks, Mayor.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, hearing of persons before council. Tonight we have Dr. Michael Hanlon, superintendent of Chardon Local Schools, to discuss safety grant funding and update on the school year, and you brought, why don't you introduce everyone that came in your contingency so we can say hi to them as well?
Sure will. Thank you, Mayor Grau. Members of council, city manager, sheriff, members of the administration. It's been a while since we've done this, and really excited to have the opportunity to speak to you tonight and give you a little update on, on where we're at with Chardon Schools. As the mayor said, we do have a little bit of a contingent here this evening, so I'll introduce the members of our group. Our treasurer CFO, Deb Armbruster, our board of education president, Karen Blankenship, and we have board of education members Keith Brewster and Todd Albright that have joined us this evening, so I appreciate their, their support in being here. When we set this up, Randy said he wanted about an hour, so I hope that's fitting everybody's timeframe. I always start with that because then when we come in around 15 minutes or so, it looks really good, so, you know, that's how we start out. But really pleased to, to just speak to you a little bit about the opening of the school year, and I'll direct your attention to the screen. We have a presentation that we'll be walking through. Mrs. Armbruster will talk a little bit about our financials in the district. We had an excellent start to the school year, really pleased with the way things have been going, and, you know, if there's any sense of normalcy that we see in school districts anymore, coming out of COVID and everything, I think that we're enjoying some of that right now, and really, our students are enjoying the benefits of, of having as normal a school year as possible. I'll be focusing my comments tonight on some of the elements of the district's success plan or strategic plan, which we've been working to redevelop in the past several months. We've been very fortunate to have members of the, the city's administration and working on various subcommittees. Chief Neas has been very active in our safety and security component, and we certainly appreciate his efforts in that, in that regard. Currently, Chardon Schools is educating approximately 2,670 students. That represents somewhat of a stabilization of some of the decline of enrollment that we've seen in that, and our school district hasn't been any exception to what we're seeing across the state of Ohio. We're just seeing generally a decline in the number of students, school age, that are being served. And our focus in Chardon Schools is on the four Es, which is enrollment, employment, enlistment, entrepreneurship, and we're very pleased that, that Chardon Schools is one of the premier school districts in Ohio, according to rating Ohio's top school districts. Our school district was ranked 32nd out of 608 school districts in the state. We're not satisfied, and that's why we're working on our district's success plan until we see that ranking move to the top school district in the state of Ohio. That's always what our focus is. I won't read through each of these, and we can certainly. I won't read through each of these and we can certainly provide the slides for you after this presentation, but these are the belief statements that support everything that we do day in and day out in Chardon Schools. And our focus right now, our vision, is that we will become a model school district in the state of Ohio by 2028, recognized for exemplary programming services, curriculum, instructional practices, policies, and literally every component of school district operation. To achieve that, we have to support the mission statement of the school district, which is a commitment to high achievement for all students. As I mentioned, we do that through a focus on the four Es and developing those not only as a high school component, but really pre-K through high school in all of the aspects of our program. And we do that, among other ways, through a focus on Ohio's academic content standards, model curricula, resources, and assessments that are designed to understand what students know and are able to do and to help us focus our work on intervening for students that need additional support or extending students that have mastered those standards. Some of the key points that I just want to touch on with respect to curriculum and instruction in our district and what some of the things that you might be seeing in our schools. We're seeing a strong focus on the science of reading and literacy. The district's been working for the past several years with a $1.1 million grant on developing instructional practices around reading and literacy. We are currently, this year, in the implementation phase of a new mathematics curriculum that our Board of Education approved. Very exciting program at Chardon High School, if you haven't heard about it, is the CREW program, which is focusing on workforce development, manufacturing, and partnerships for students. We have students doing some really exciting things in the CREW lab and we're starting to develop partnerships with some of the local area businesses. I know that, you know, that Mr. Blackley mentioned some of the exciting opportunities that we have with businesses in our community. And we're now, the teachers are developing partnerships where we can get internship placements for those students. And our focus again is creating job opportunities for those students and filling niche needs that those employers have within the community. We've also added this year engineering courses at our high school, at Chardon High School. So we have students taking CCP Credit, College Credit Plus, if you don't know what that is. That acronym is options for engineering courses at Chardon High School to complement the extension of College Credit Plus throughout our high school. So we have probably one of the most robust offerings of CCP courses in business, engineering, and other content areas at Chardon High School of any high school in the county. This year, there's a focus on our science and social studies curriculum, which will be under review and presumably we'll see new implementation next year. One of the very exciting things that you'll see is our teachers are focused on working in professional learning communities, is what we describe them. And this is a continual cycle of using data. We talked about assessments earlier, comparing those against the academic content standard achievement and developing methods for intervening where students need that support and really refining the instructional practices that we see in our classrooms. So we've spent a great deal of time focusing our professional development on ensuring that teachers continue to ask those questions. What is it that students should know and be able to do? How are we going to know that? What are we going to do if they're already successful with those standards? And what are we going to do if they're not meeting success? And how are we going to support them? Coming out of the strategic plan, and again, I won't go through each of the specific goals, but I will touch on the goal areas. Our strategic plan, when our board approves, it's currently in draft. We'll focus on six key areas, communications, continuing to enhance our communication strategies, engage student learning, resources and fiscal responsibilities. And I think we have some great news to share with you concerning the finances of the district. I'll throw that to Deb in just a moment. Safety and security, as I mentioned, continued work with facilities and operations and creating stronger community connections, much like the program that I just discussed with CREW, but extending those through a variety of other opportunities in our school district. I want to touch briefly on capital improvements and the safety grant that Chardon Schools received. Proud to say that over the summer, the school district successfully completed $3.3 million in capital improvements in our school district. Replacement of visitor bleachers at Memorial Field, most significantly, full roof replacements at Munson Elementary School, Chardon Middle School, Chardon High School. All of that work is completed. As you drive past, you see a lot of window replacement going on, complete window replacement at Chardon Middle School, partial at Chardon High School, and we're continuing to work in that area. Expansion of touchless restroom fixtures throughout our school facilities in response to COVID. District food service, equipment replacement, park playground, I'm sure you've seen that, if you've been on the square at all. A lot of paving and concrete work and weight room work at Chardon High School as well, which were done through donations by our boosters. As I mentioned, we received, and it was publicized in a variety of sources, the school district received $143,000 in the first wave of the school safety grants. There are specific uses for those grants with a list that is distributed by the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. We have to purchase items that come from that list of safety items. We're going to be focusing on continuing our exterior door locks and other improvements at our school facilities. In addition, we're awaiting notification on a federal COPSS grant that we applied for and hopefully that will help us fund the security vestibules, which have long been needed at Chardon High School and Chardon Middle School, and also allow us to continue to expand door lock replacements and other improvements. So district finances, at this time, I'm going to turn it to Deb and let Deb speak a little bit concerning the financial picture of our district.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon, members of council. I'm going to briefly review a preview of our November forecast, which I've already done extensive work on. What you see on the screen right here is a 10-year chart. First five years are actual figures, second set of five are forecasted. Our revenue is greatly affected by House Bill 920, where when valuations increase, our millage decreases, where we receive the same amount of money, with the exception of inside mill. So that's why you slightly see our revenue going up in the five years of the forecast. Our taxes comprise 76.6 of total revenue. And I kind of arrowed them over on the left. We have real estate taxes, public utility, and homestead rollback. I modeled this with a 98% collection rate from 23 to 27, although we have been collecting over 100% for the last five years. That's due to end. Our state revenue is only known, oh, let me continue. The state funding is 15.3% and other sources are 8.9%. Our state revenue is only known for two years for the governor's budget, so it's really hard to forecast that past a two-year period. And the revenue is projected to increase only at .66 annually through fiscal year 2027. Next, I wanted to take a look at the expenditures. Again, a 10-year picture, five years to the left are actual, five years to the right are forecasted. As you can see from our actuals, we've pretty much flatlined with the exception of 2021. 2021 was an exception because we increased spending for in-class instruction. We increased staff. It was during COVID, a lot of schools were closed, but we were not. We came back down. You look at our 22 actual figures and we attribute that savings to our reconfiguration. From 23 through 27, I modeled this for inflation, 7 to 10%. Student supplies, student fees, which we've moved a lot of that back into the general fund and we've reduced fees to the students across the board. And then it also includes our salary increases. We have two negotiated agreements for the next three years and then we just put a percent on for the two years after that. So the bottom line looks really great. We have deficit spending projected for 2026. It's very minimal and deficit spending is, only means that we're spending slightly more than we're receiving for that specific year. As you can see from this chart, the projection is to have $25,625,000 at the end of the five-year projection. So the plan, as always, is to maintain costs, seek additional revenue, keep expenditures low until we balance the budget for the next five years.
Thanks, Deb. So with that, we wanted to open up for some questions and answers from council, if you had any. Happy to engage any, anything you'd be interested in discussing.
I do have a question with the CREW internship. Is that for trade employment?
So manufacturing, a little bit in trades. We have, there are components of the CREW program that get into electrical, plumbing, and other, that would constitute trades. We're starting to build the partnerships now so we can get more students out into those internship opportunities.
And is that done in collaboration with Auburn?
It is not in collaboration with Auburn, but it's also not in competition with Auburn. It's kind of a delicate balance. We have students that still go to Auburn. I'd like you to think about CREW being more like, the student that goes to Auburn is focused on that two-year program. They've really made a commitment. They know that's what they want to do. Where CREW would be more exploration and opportunities for development in a variety of areas. Hopefully, a student settles on something and the ideal would be that that sparks an interest and an opportunity for them. But not every student that's going through CREW is necessarily that laser-focused on, hey, I'm going for a two-year program for HVAC. The other thing is not every student potentially that wants to go to Auburn is able to get in. It's a somewhat competitive program. We have a number of school districts that all belong to Auburn Career Center and this gives us an opportunity to backstop those students that maybe can't get into Auburn Career Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hanlon, on the safety grant funding issue, it appears that those funds that were allocated cannot be used to supplement the salary of our security resource officer. Is that correct?
Thanks for the question. Yes, I forwarded the limitations on the expenditure of that grant to City Manager Sharp. And no, we couldn't, we can't use that particular grant on salaries. It's tangible improvements and the fact that it's flowing through the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, you know, is pretty clear, also kind of one of those indicators that, you know, it's on those tangible improvements to facilities or, you know, radio systems, things of that nature.
Understood. Just wanted to clarify that. And then you mentioned a security vestibule or something. Is that, are we talking about metal detectors or how does that function?
We're not talking about metal detectors, but we are talking about creating two-stage entries at the high school and the middle school currently. And it's been a problem for a long time is that when an individual, while we screen them at the door, when they're coming as a visitor, we do screen them. There's a buzzer system for them to get in. Once they get in, they have access to the, you know, basically to the facility at that point. What you see in new school construction is a two-stage entry where the individual comes in and then there's still a staging opportunity and there's a direction into an office area or a more secure location of the school rather than simply allowing, you know, unrestricted access to the facility.
Specifically at the high school, during entry in the morning, is that limited to one? It's been a while since I've seen morning activity, but you have multiple entry points. Is that, are we condensing down to single or still providing additional areas to enter the building?
No, the student entry would still be at multiple points, multiple entry points. We really use three to four entry points coming into the high school. That would not be changed, at least not envisioned to be changed at any time, even with the construction of this. The focus of the security vestibule would be more people unknown to, visitors to the school campus and making sure that we're channeling them through a two-stage entry.
Very good. Are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Hanlon?
I believe, is it next Wednesday? You are making a presentation on the state of the schools through the Chamber of Commerce?
Thanks for the question. That's correct. No, next Wednesday's Lunch and Learn with the Chamber. We'll be hosting it at Chardon High School. A lot of, many of the programs that I mentioned tonight, we're going to showcase during that presentation and allow a little more opportunity for visitors to speak to teachers and students that are involved in those programs.
If somebody is interested in attending that, they should contact the Chamber.
They would go through Melissa Rico and Chamber of Commerce.
Well, thank you for your.
Well, again, thank you. And we're always, Deb and I are always available to answer questions. So certainly, we appreciate this format, but at any time, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to us. So thank you very much.
Congratulations on your beginning of the school year in such a great fashion and thanks for the information.
Great, thank you.
If you want to break down, you know, you're welcome to do that. We can move on here and we won't bother you and we won't bother us. We also have tonight, first another person on the agenda, Ed Slararski.
Close, close enough.
Well, give me the.
Slu-Sar-Ski.
Slu-Ski. Is that spelled Slu?
Everybody calls me Slu.
Slu, come on up. He's here to request permission for fall decorations on the square.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I am the current Vice President of the Chardon Square Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I wish I was ahead of him because I am more anticlimactic. I don't have a power presentation. I have handouts. So what we're requesting is, I brought up a, I brought up an idea for a scarecrow contest and just to try to get the environment and everybody in the community to get together and start trying to get back out and have some fun. Holden Arboretum used to have them and we used to be a big part of that and it was always a very good draw and people appreciated that. So I brought it up. The group, Heather and Deborah and Sylvia, told me that I needed to talk to Randy. So I brought it up to Randy, just briefly spoke to him and he said, you're going to probably have to come before us and ask about it. So what we're trying to do is have a contest, but what we need to know is if we'd be able to present or use some of the Chardon Square itself to host these scarecrows and let, you know, people kind of walk around and see them and then have the ability to vote on them or we'll have some other, some other groups vote on them. And so what I wanted to do is, I'm sorry, but I have just handouts to share with you guys. First one's a great one. It's just how the scarecrows themselves would be. Randy actually brought up one, although not to put him on the spot, but he had one where it was a flower pot one where the second group would be around the square businesses themselves that would have, it would be mainly flower pots. It wouldn't be standing up scarecrows. And so that's our contest. What we're trying to do is bring this as a huge community group. Again, for this, for this group, we just would know, want to know if we'd be able to use the square to host some of the scarecrows themselves. And I hope we got the information. I had a decorating contest request. It's still in draft form, time-wise and what we're trying to do, but we would want to see if it would be safe, secure, and available for our use, or something like that.
So Ed, you're proposing that you have these flower pots with scarecrows in them around the square that people are going to, they're going to decorate and they're going to put out there as part of the contest? Is that it?
We wanted the businesses to do that around the square. And then, yes, they would, they would take, if they so choose, they would bring a flower pot and decorate it and then put it out in front of their businesses. So that would be one of the contests. And then the other one would be like a stand-up or a mobile display that would be in the square if we could.
Like the, who would put the display together?
Whoever the groups are. So we're kind of hoping like the middle school, the high school, the organizations would put them together and then we'd give them a spot.
So there'd be spots on the grass?
Right, that's correct. And I know we have some concerns about people, about the items being moved, displayed, or touched. But I mean, this community, I don't really see that unless, I think it's something that would last.
Are scarecrows meant to be like a, I think a traditional scarecrow is something hanging on a frame?
It could be. It could be. A lot of, a lot of the people now, they just want them to like wrap a hay bale and then they. they make them sit on a hay bale. But yes, we would also want to have something like that.
So, following up on that, if you needed to have posts installed, that's something that you would do and take down?
With the permission of the group, and then Mike Butts, I'm sure I would have to make sure I got his permission, too.
So, these would be in the grass? It wouldn't be in the walkway? It would be little clusters of, you know, a con, right, around the park?
Right. We would, ultimately, we'd love to have them on this side, you know, facing the beans area, just because the backside is like elevated, and sometimes you put them out to the cars park, where it's a little bit less, and you'd be able to see a little bit of that, but it's up to, it's up to council.
So, there's been this in the past to some degree, but just, just a big expansion on what's taken place?
Yeah. It used to be that businesses, and not all the businesses would participate, they would do it right out in front of their, right, it would be in front, but that was several years ago.
Before my time, yes.
Way before, Ed. And so, now, you're just looking to try to build on that and put decorations in the park?
Yes. I just think we got a great asset there. I know Heather and Deborah, and everybody's heard of me listening to this, but we have such a great asset, and we do use it wisely. I think we could use it more and bring more people to the square to appreciate it.
And so, when is Fall Fest?
October.
So, Ed, when would you put these out?
We would ultimately like to have them at least closer to the Halloween, not at Halloween, but at least before that, so it kind of steers the spirit up a little bit, and then Halloween kind of rolls into that. But it would, again, it would be up to you guys to let us know.
So, Fall Fest is the first, October, and then is there anything after that in the park?
I did not see anything on the schedule.
After that? So, you would do it after, after Fall Fest?
Yeah.
Then you would set it up, and then you would take it down when?
As soon as, whatever the contest day was over, it's that Friday or something, we'd have it disassembled. And the only other question I'd like to have you guys like to understand is like, with the economics, and it's happening right now, we didn't, I haven't gotten this all the way passed through the CSA, but I don't really want to charge for the individuals. It's, you know, they would bring their own materials, don't get me wrong, but to charge to have it set up, but a lot of times, the individuals that, who won, they would like to donate it for a raffle, or, you know, to sell it off, and then the money could be used however you guys see fit. I think that would be an interesting way. But the rest of them would be disassembled and taken back home if they wanted to put them in front of their house.
So, Ed, the decorations, so Halloween's on the 31st, so decorations would need to come down on the first. They'd need to come down relatively soon, because then they start setting up for-
Christmas.
Christmas. So, if we said that we would want all the decorations down by Tuesday, like Tuesday the first or second, would that be possible, then?
Would you want it during Halloween? I mean, the last time I was here, that whole area was just inundated. We would kind of like try to set up the spirit of it, and then take it down, and you guys would have Halloween, was my thought. I don't know. If you guys want to continue, that's definitely fine.
This is your, this is your deal.
Right.
So, if you wanted to take them down before Halloween, that's fine?
I would.
I think, so you're saying then your contest is going to run, or it's going to be set up sometime after the first, that's a Saturday? So, let's just say the second through, what, like the 29th?
Yeah. Or the two weeks in the middle, I was kind of looking for.
Okay.
And then, I think that'd be perfect for everybody, and then we could take it down. It would be no issues with anybody accidentally falling into them or anything like that.
Fall Fest? Fall Fest is the first?
First of October.
Okay. So, what are your specific dates that you're looking, that you're thinking of doing it, then?
The middle two weeks of October.
Okay. Ninth, so that's the ninth and the 22nd?
Correct.
All right.
So, Fall Fest typically has something there where families can build a scarecrow. Seems like it would be natural to try to coordinate the two things. A family could build a scarecrow and then decide that they wanted to put it in competition.
Stick it in a pot and leave it there?
Well, no. So, this would have to be, there'd have to be, I guess, you know, the frames or poles or something, or whatever, already set up. That's why I'm saying it would take some coordination. I'm just, just throwing it out there as an idea. If people building scarecrows and you're having a scarecrow competition, it would seem like logical to somehow coordinate the two.
And so, one of the things was, at Holden, too, they would dress them up, get them ready, and they would keep them at home, because they had a contest like that, too. And then, they would bring them back, and we'd be more than happy to, it'd be really easy for them to just take it back from, if they were allowed to take them home, and then put them right back up. We wouldn't have any problem with that. We'd probably appreciate that more.
Is this geared to Halloween, or is this geared to just the fall activities?
Fall activity.
Okay.
Yep. No, as my wife said, no slashers, no body parts, no anything like that, which is what I have usually when I do the decorations of my houses, but it would be very nice.
So, do we make, need to make a motion or anything like that? So, you're looking for the ninth through the 22nd, having decorations on the square in the grass? You'll work in conjunction with Mike and his team-
Yep.
-to make sure that they're in the appropriate spots and not a hazard?
Correct.
Do we have to make, is that the motion? I just made that.
Sounds like it.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll second it.
Did you read that motion?
I think.
Yeah.
Make me sound smarter than-
I've been moved and seconded. Further discussion, I do have a question.
Sure. Absolutely.
So, it says, Part Three here, the rules, the final rules will need to be reviewed and approved by Chardon City Council. Is that what we're doing tonight, or is it going to be another?
No. There's an addendum, sir.
Okay. So, when does, is that for our early October? That's almost beginning your activities, correct? You come back to our next October meeting?
If you would like, or I was thinking I could just disseminate it out as we get the set, the final setup, and then you guys could kind of review it, or just take it with Randy.
We don't, we don't need to review it.
I don't think we need to do the rules.
Okay.
We do not.
No, absolutely. I didn't know. This is my first time here, so I'm just, whatever you guys decide.
Unless anybody on council wants to see these rules, but-
However, if we do a contest, would you be willing to be participants in the judging?
No.
Some of you, no?
No.
No?
No fella.
All right. That's fair enough.
We could designate Randy to review the meeting.
Yeah, Randy likes to tell, I mean-
Yeah. Sharing the rules.
I was thinking of entering one, so I can't, you know, if I'm gonna have to enter.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I can't, you know.
No, no, he's talking about the rules, not the-
Chardon Square.
Oh, the rules. I thought the-
Yeah, yeah.
Just get a sec.
Excuse me?
Let them put the rules together.
We do have the rules, but we just didn't know if you guys wanted to see them to-
Ed, we do not?
Okay.
I think we should vote.
Send us a copy of the rules at some point.
No.
Yes, I just, I'm gonna send them to Randy.
For Randy to see the rules?
Yeah.
I'll help judge if you want.
That'd be fantastic. We would love that. As long as you don't put one in, or you have nobody associated with it.
See the rules.
I'll have it to you tonight, sir.
Todd had a sash.
Oh, my God.
Okay. So, we, it's been moved and seconded. We got, any other comments? If not, Amy called a question.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Slu.
Thank you. Bye.
Melissa Bieber?
No.
Who are these people?
Yes, we had, we had a few other folks from the Square Association that did not have time enough to prepare what they were going to present, so Sylvia McGee and also Melissa Rico are not presenting tonight. They're coming to our October meeting. All right, we're gonna move on to the hearing of the general public, and I know that Todd's here. Todd, you want to come up? Introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, where you live, all that good stuff.
I'm Todd Albright. I live on 104 North Street. One of the other two houses, or one of two houses, I have the fence. You guys approve. Appreciate that very much. This is sort of like a fact-finding endeavor. So, I'm on a committee for safety for the schools, and I don't really understand fully the relationship between the city and the schools, so that's really why I'm up here. There was a student hit in a crosswalk last year, struck by a student leaving the school parking lot there. And that kind of prompted us on this journey to figure out if that was the best way for students to cross, what could be done or should be done. And I hear a bunch of things. So, one of the reasons why I'm up here, the main reason, is we've had, we've put up signs as a school district, flashing signs or expensive signs, and they've disappeared. The one at Hampton disappeared, the one at Munson disappeared. These are expensive signs, so anything that's done, I want it to be as practical as possible and as, done as efficiently as possible. I guess what I don't understand is, the school seems to think it's the school's responsibility to do this, and I don't know where to stand on that, because it's a city street. I know you guys deal with crossings and whatnot. I asked Mr. Sharp if there's some sort of partnership that could happen with this. It's tax dollars no matter what, so I don't know exactly what the relationship is. So, I went on a fact-finding endeavor with DOT, and I asked the superintendent this today. He hasn't had a chance to answer me this. I just found out today, so I wasn't trying to ambush him by any means, but we're supposed to have a school route plan in place. Maybe Chief Neas could answer if that's part of it, because it's supposed to be the school law enforcement and traffic officials, which would determine if that's actually the best place to have that crossing. And I don't know if that has occurred, or if it could occur, maybe, because, you know, you have that stop sign there at Maple and Chardon Avenue. Maybe that would be a better spot, rather than the kind of throwing money at this and the way of signs that might disappear. Not to say the city would take the sides. I don't know what happened with those, but, so maybe if one of you could address that, like, what is your guys', what's the city's obligations here on this? Does anybody know that answer?
As far as obligations of who has to pay for what?
So, like, I guess, if we pay to put up these signs, are we obligated to maintain them, even though they're on city property? Or would you guys then maintain them if they disappear or whatever, as two other signs have disappeared? Are we responsible for that, to the taxpayers? Like, what is the relationship here? How does this work?
Well, we had applied for a grant together. I believe you know about that.
Yes.
The grant was not successful, and we were also applying for pedestrian improvements up here on the square in that same time.
Yes.
And since then, we looked after, with the school year started, and this came up again, we looked to get an updated quote. We do now have the updated quote.
I saw that.
I've sent that to the superintendent, because that's where we left off on it. I believe he was going to work with the safety committee and come back and say what your safety, not our safety committee, what the school's safety committee would like to do.
Yes.
This is the first I'm hearing that the school might be looking at moving that, or having somebody study that to look at moving it.
Yeah, if it's a possibility, if it makes sense, that's what I'm wondering. I'm not, I'm not an expert. I'm not. That is what I'm saying.
I don't know if the students would move down to Maple. I mean, that's, that's the issue, is would the students actually use it if there's no crosswalk there at the parking lot?
Yes.
And I don't think practicality that that would work very well. But anyway, so then, I think he was going to talk to you. There was supposed to be some funds that might be available from the school to partner, to propose partnering with the, with the city, and that hasn't taken place yet. So, at that point in time, the superintendent would approach me, I would then take it to our safety committee, and say, here is something that the school would like us to work together on. Can we do it? It's not a project that's been planned for, it's not funded.
Yes.
So, we'd have to find some money if we have money. The grant that we had proposed to do was to be engineered the next two years and then built in '25. So, that wasn't going to be built anytime soon as well. And if we apply again this January, that whole schedule would be back a year. But, but with the school, we work hand-in-hand on numerous things, you know, and we always have throughout the years. This has been there for, well, since I've been here, probably since Dave's been here, that crosswalk's been there, and it's been talked about many, many, many times over as well.
Okay.
So, at this point, and my, my belief is that it's back in the school's court, since we have the quote now, what do you want to do? And then, we'd go from there.
Okay.
I was gonna say, my, as working as a municipal engineer for many years, my belief and the law director would have to back me up on this, but under Ohio Vice Code, any traffic control device in the public right-of-way is going to be the responsibility of the municipality, whether it's a crosswalk, signage, or anything. So, that's just a general statement. Did you make an application in the Safe Routes to School program with ODA?
No, this was the Safety Systemic Safety Program.
What signs?
We had applied for the Safe Routes to School back in 2007.
Right.
And then, that never went forward.
What signs disappeared? Like, or you said, signals or signs? Like, were they just sitting?
These were out in the townships, but like, this is part of the dialogue, so as, as a member of the safety committee, I guess, basically, throwing $92,000 at this isn't gonna work, which I honestly, I saw the video. You can't forget this video. I don't, the student's not paying attention, and the driver's not paying attention. How do you alter that?
You can try.
You can try. So, I guess, my, the whole, my hope here is that, because people are asking for, you know, as accurate accountability as possible, I don't want to be an idiot on the safety committee and say, yeah, this is gonna work. So, I'm hoping for wide consensus here on what is the best approach and the best relationship builder here, because the general talk in, in the committees is that, and this is from the superintendent, because he's been, you know, from Painesville, he's here, is that generally, there's kind of like this odd, not really congenial relationship. And that's not necessarily the way you put it, but I don't know.
You know, I'd like to address that. As Randy indicated, Randy's been around a while, I've been here a while, and I've kind of heard those same comments. I can assure you that if, even if the school board and the council doesn't interact a lot together, the staffs of the two organizations work hand-in-hand continually.
Okay.
And in my, what was it, 20 years or whatever, I've never known a conflict when the staffs didn't work together to, to create a good result.
Okay.
That doesn't mean, that, and that doesn't need the council and the school board to interact.
Yeah.
They just do it, because that's the way business works, and that's the way this community works, is together. And it's always been that way, and whether it's Paul and the Public Service Department or what have you, that's the way it, it has been, and I'm sure it still is today. So, even though if you don't, as a school board member, you don't, might not see a lot of interaction with us, that doesn't mean it's not going on.
Sure.
I can assure you that.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
Randy, am I not correct?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Like I stated earlier.
There's a lot of daily, not every day, but interaction between the police department and the schools or the public service department and the schools, whoever.
Yeah.
But Chief, to Andy's comment, I just wanted to make that comment because I've heard that before and I always shook my head and go, where is that coming from? Because I don't buy it at all. We're responsible for those crosswalk signs at the bike path, right?
Correct.
The flashing signs and all that, that's the city.
Right, that was the city that put those in. We've met with the schools. We also met, we had a meeting at the time that we were applying for the grant and the school was applying for the grant. We worked together. We reviewed that. We had traffic engineer involved in the, in that grant process. So our relationship with the school, I would think is very good. We, from the police department's perspective, I talk to somebody from the schools probably at least once a week and at this time of year, almost every day, especially as schools starting to get ramped back up and with traffic and so forth. Dr. Hanlon and I, over the last probably three weeks, have talked a number of times about things related to, to ingress and egress from the schools. So our relationship to, to answer that, that question is, I think, very good. He's got me on speed dial. I've got him on speed dial. As far as the, the look at the, at the problem, we've certainly discussed it mutually and as, as a group. We've also looked for different available ways to fund projects. So, and I'll take it a little broader. Once, when you heard Dr. Hanlon talk about safety and security and grants that they've, I'm equally is looking for any available funding that we can apply that would, would benefit the schools as well. So I think it's a mutual relationship and we do our best we can to, to work together to resolve problems.
Yeah.
I guess my question too was the, the school zone flashing signs that are out there.
Right.
Not talking about that crosswalk, but the, the normal ones.
Yeah.
Is that the city's responsibility to maintain those?
Yes, I believe it would be, yes.
Okay.
So to answer your question, if they were stolen, then it would be the municipality's responsibility.
Well, because part of that is they, is the business manager, Steve, said that they put the two up on, on North Street and been paid for those. I don't know if that's accurate or not. I didn't really dig into that, but.
I don't know either.
So that's why this question came about. Like, are we supposed to actually be doing this? And is it, I know that's required by law, but like this crossing endeavor, I honestly have mixed opinions about this because I don't know that it's going to be super practical and effective.
And I'm sorry that I didn't know that, that that was going to be a question here tonight. So I'm not prepared to answer that. I know that those signs on North Street have been there for as long as I can remember. I do know that the city, we schedule for the, with signal service for when those signs are activated and when they're turned off during the school year. And I also know that we pay for the signal service folks to work on those signs. So you know, what that means, Todd, I don't, beyond that, I don't know.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Certainly with some, a little bit of time, I could do a better job of answering that question for you.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate always that it's like kind of candid in here generally. It seems like a really good thing. And I mean, I do want to say that the treasurer went through the funds and found dormant funds. We, that's possibly available and maybe some forestry funds, you know, from that project. That's possibly available. But is that the best usage of these funds? Is really the main question I have. Because there's the security vestibule question coming up and all that too, so.
Plus, I think you'd want, and cross, going back to that crossing area, I don't think the school would want the city to say on our own, guess what? This is what we're doing with that school crosswalk without getting your input. It just, I don't think that'd be a good way to run a, run a shop.
Well, we did, we did have a drawing to that effect of where we thought the crosswalk should be relocated to, to get it away from the entrance to the parking lot.
Yeah.
And I think, and I, I think the school said no to that, if that's what I recall.
We did. We had a very extensive conversation, a, a long safety meeting. We talked about this specifically. Kevin Westbrook, Kevin Westbrook was there. We were all there, we were talking about all of these things, moving the crosswalk, what kind of things we could do to make the crosswalk more like, could we raise it up? Could we put reflectors in the, you know, there were different reasons why we couldn't do some of these things. A lot of it has to do with snow, snow plows. Like you put something in the ground, it's going to be gone the first season. We talked about all that. And then at the, the, at that meeting, that was when we were applying for the grants. So that was that process. And that wasn't that long ago. I mean, this has just been over, you know, the last several months that we've been working on that. So though, all of those things have been discussed at, at length. So where it was left for us was, as Randy said, apply for the grants, see what happens with the grants. The quote just came into, you know, just came in for what it's going to cost. So now it seems at this point, it's back with, for you all to come back to us if you have a request for help with, from the city as far as doing something with that crosswalk. Right? I mean, isn't that kind of where it's left at at this point? So anytime, or you know, anytime you want to come back, that's great. If you want to, if we need to have a safety meeting, like safety, safety meetings, we can set something up. You know, we get chief, everybody who's involved in that room.
Okay. Well, I mean, that would be my request personally as a citizen and a school board member. Like if we could initiate that discussion somehow, I don't know if that would be between you and the superintendent or whatever, but I'd like to know what the outcome of that would be, who's responsible for it? What would be, you know, where, where we meet in that before anything? Because they want to vote on this pretty rapidly, one way or another. So I'd like next week.
What government entity makes a call on establishing a place for the flashing lights that we see at most elementary schools? But there isn't one on Maple from Chardon Avenue North, correct, Todd? There's nothing, there's hard signs, but there's no flashing sign there.
Yeah, I don't recall there being flashing signs.
So you mean a school zone or it's a school? A blinking school zone. Why, who says to the school district and/or the city that this area requires that based on bus traffic, based on pedestrian traffic, whatever it is? Because both of those pedestrian and bus are very prominent right where we're, where we're speaking. So who makes that call?
Yeah, is there one? I guess that's the question. Is there one?
There isn't. Oh, oh, is there a requirement?
Is there a requirement?
Okay, that's, that's even, that gets back to, that's even further down the road. But there, and to your point, I can understand that ones in hand have been removed since the school.
Yeah.
But the months in township, if they had blinking lights near the school, elementary school and they were removed?
I guess when they widen the road, they disappear.
Clearly months in township, but who would decide that you need a blinking sign here during a certain period of time in the day that said, slow down, school zone or whatever it is? So that's different than the crosswalk, you know, that's just saying an area.
Doug, Doug might know.
Traffic control devices on public roadways are governed by the Ohio Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I'm not sure of the particulars on when a flashing school zone sign is triggered, but I can certainly find that out.
Wouldn't mind looking into that. Even though Maple is, Maple is still housing pre-K.
Yeah, it's here.
Correct? So you still have a younger group coming in there with tons of parents dropping out.
Generally don't cross the road there very often. Or if at all, they try not to let any of the young kids cross the road. So it's more like the high school crowd, but.
Right, there's a couple of different exits and a few points there. But anyway, Doug, if you wouldn't mind doing that just so for clarification and then we'll share that with Todd.
Appreciate that.
You get together with, as of today, Randy said he sent Dr. Hanlon the updated estimates. So you guys will review that and then maybe get together for a joint safety committee meeting at some point.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Safety committee is Heather and myself.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, moving on, agenda item number.
If I can go back as general public, which I want to go back to council committee reports. We are planned to have, we're scheduled to have a service committee meeting next Thursday at 11 o'clock, correct?
Right.
And topics are loading zone on the square. Randy, help me here, right? And if weather permits, we are going to take a field trip to the cemetery. And I don't know if there's anything else or not right now. But I believe that agenda, I have to call Becky, is going to go out tomorrow. Everyone's invited if you have an interest. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to full business. Report on status of Joint Recreation District, and that's going to be discussed by Randy.
Yes, this is a continued conversation about the Joint Recreation District that council had asked that we look into, the potential of forming. Adam and I met with Madison Joint Recreation District back at the end of August and went out there and talked to them at one of their board meetings. They're an all volunteer board. They really have no revenue stream. They do some fundraisers to put on some things. So this isn't a model that we would be looking after. They gave us some good input and good ideas and it's a, a good group of folks that work in their community. But it's not something that I think would work here in this area for the purposes of increasing recreational opportunities. Then on August 30th, we met via Zoom with Andy Wildman. He's the executive director for Granville Recreation District. Andy's been there for 13 years and he has grown their programs exponentially over the years. He now has seven full-time employees and 15 to 20 seasonal and part-time employees. And they serve a population of 15,000. If Chardon area school district had one, it would be closer to 20,000 people. Just as give you an idea. It is also comprised of the township village and a city. So there's, and a school district. So it's a similar type arrangement that we would have here. So it was very useful to talk to him. He was very helpful. He sent us all kinds of documents that they've done, their legislation, some of their levy that they tried to get passed to do things right now. They put one on hold at the pandemic, but they're trying to move forward and build a community center and a swimming pool, I believe, in, in their community. So after talking with him, I think this model is something that we could replicate. And I'd like to recommend that council permit me and Adam to continue this conversation just on a very informal basis with the trustees to see if the trustees would have any. Well, first off, to talk, to talk to them about it because they may not have any idea what a joint recreation district is. Try to explain it and what the benefits will be. And then to see if they have any interest going forward. Just that like meet somebody for coffee and have a half hour conversation to talk about it and see where we'd go from there. I really think this at the local level is a better idea than hiring Fran Stettner Carroll to be our communication device, if you will. Obviously it'll take time, but I think this is nothing that's going to happen quickly. It would be just planting some seeds and seeing if they would germinate and go forward in anytime soon in the coming years. So I'm looking for that direction or alternate direction.
I have no objections to that.
Say absolutely yes.
Yep, you're on the right track.
Okay, we will continue in that fashion then. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. New business? Do you have any new business? No?
Good.
Heather?
No. So rude.
I can picture it now.
Legislation, agenda item number 12. Topic A, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? I know. Hearing none.
With the titles, I missed the resolution.
Anyhow, go ahead.
A resolution providing for the control of blighted disease of shade trees within public rights of way and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the city of Chardon, authorizing the Shade Tree Commission to so provide during the year of 2022, establishing a single district for said purpose in accordance with the provisions of section 727.011 of the Ohio Revised Code, providing the assessment of the costs and expense of such planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing upon benefiting property in said district and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Second.
Discussion, call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Resolution number 14-22. A resolution providing for the control of blighted disease of shade trees within public rights of way and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the city of Chardon, authorizing the Shade Tree Commission to so provide during the year of 2022, establishing a single district for said purpose in accordance with the provisions of section 727.011 of the Ohio Revised Code, providing the assessment of the costs and expense of such planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing upon benefiting property in said district and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 14-22. A resolution providing for the control of blighted disease of shade trees within public rights of way and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the city of Chardon, authorizing the Shade Tree Commission to so provide during the year of 2022, establishing a single district for said purpose in accordance with the provisions of section 727.011 of the Ohio Revised Code, providing the assessment of the costs and expense of such planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing upon benefiting property in said district and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 14-22?
So moved.
Second.
Second at discussion. Randy?
Thank you. The urban forester was here at the last council meeting and went through the Shade Tree Commission and the process that they use throughout the year to spend this money. It's been $70,000 for several years now and they continue to pretty much spend all 70,000. We budgeted a little over 74,000 this year. So we're requesting that it stay at 70,000 for now.
Very good. Any questions for Randy?
So there was a question that came up about the year 2022. We're in the ninth, we're in the ninth month of the calendar year 2022. But I believe the law director has an explanation.
All right, so every year that council does this, the, the year of enactment is the, the current calendar year so that it follows the tax on the property. So 2022 tax year, 2022 resolution.
Very good. Thank you, Ben.
Did you, did you write this?
No, this is, this is my predecessor's. It's so great, I could, I can't change it. No, Amy appreciates it.
We've asked. Thousand characters maybe on the title.
Notice the next two are just a nice show of thens.
Anyhow.
Okay, anything else? No. Call the question, please.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 12B. Would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution of necessity for the assessment of street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Moved in second at discussion. Call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Resolution number 15-22. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of street lighting and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 15-22. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 15-22?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Back to Randy.
Yeah, similar to the shade tree assessment, this, this street lighting has been in place for quite some time. 130,000 is what we budgeted for this year as well. So we'll most likely do the same for next year. And the ending balance isn't building up to be of a concern where we can lower it quite yet.
Randy, a question. We switched to LED lighting throughout the city for street lighting. Aren't our actual, are, are electric costs going down or are they going up?
I haven't talked to Mark particularly about that point, but last time Matt and I talked about it, the, we're realizing some savings because the LEDs are providing that, but we're not realizing savings overall because of the cost of electricity. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
So it's not like we saw our expenses go down, it's just not going up as quickly.
And with some of the new housing, we're going to have additional.
Right, there'll be additional costs.
Well, yeah, but there'll also be additional properties to assess.
Yeah. Those are all LEDs. If you haven't driven around Thistle Creek, go ahead and do that because they're, they're different than our, you know, high overhead streetlights. And they're white and, and bright like that, but they're shorter. I was curious to see how it would be.
Decorative?
Yeah, they're decorative.
But on the point of additional properties, since it's capped at a certain amount, it's just spread out further right, so it's less per property. Am I translating that correctly?
Yes, because it's 70,000.
This says 100.
I'm sorry, 130 for this. I'm back on shade trees.
And this is only a one-year, it gets, it can be adjusted each year.
We're on street lighting, right?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, Dan's going to make a joke. Like, wait, Dan.
Oh, man. Now I get it, right?
But we always get a little bit more. Like right now, so far, we've received 171,575,64. So we received 55% of what we budgeted. So we'll probably receive closer to 140 at the end of the day, at the end of 2022.
Okay, any other questions for Randy on that? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 12C, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LaCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Resolution number 16 dash 22. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 16 dash 22. A resolution of a necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 16 dash 22?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Randy?
Yes, this is for the sidewalk improvements fund. It's $100,000. This is what we're using for the maintenance and then also for the connectivity. We have another sidewalk fund that we're spending down, um, because the parameters on, on that are much stricter than this fund. So once that one's spent down, it'll be zero, and then we'll continue to add to this fund, so we can continue both of those programs. And we're restricted by the amount of money that we have in there to do the projects.
Any questions for Randy? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LaCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Thank you. 12D on our agenda, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Would anyone, let's see, is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Call the question.
Mr. LaCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Resolution number 17 dash 22. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution number 17 dash 22. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 17 dash 22?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. In July, council adopted the 2023 tax budget. This tat, this budget was then taken to the County Tax Budget Commission and approved in August. You now have before you, for your consideration, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Any just questions, comments, or remarks?
According to the, one of the local newspapers, I think the commission had some nice things to say regarding the city's budget and financial, um, putting this all together. Is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LaCo?
Very good, thank you. Item, agenda 13, review of expenditures. Daniel?
Yes, we're here. Councilman Blackley and myself reviewed them here last Saturday. We had a couple of questions, and Mark answered them satisfactorily, and everything's in order.
Very good, thank you for that. Agenda item number 14, executive session. We do have reason for executive session for the following reasons: to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, caring for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions